Well, good evening. Mayor's running late, so in to ensure that we are timely with our meeting this evening. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to announce that some commissioner, staff and the public are attending remotely via Zoom by phone or on-site. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak to the public, so that it is participating who knows who is speaking. This is critical, given the number of remote participants and current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General. Please be sure you're speaking into a microphone to ensure your comments are heard and an accurate record is made. When public comments are allowed on an agenda item, comments should be limited to the topic of that item. Be mindful, disruptive comments and behavior are not permitted and may result in removal from the meeting. I will now call the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Monday, September 15, 2025, to order and ask the clerk to announce the meeting, and please call roll.
Good evening. You're hereby notified that a special meeting of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, is scheduled to be conducted in a hybrid format on Monday, September 15, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the Commission Chambers of the Municipal Office Building, 701 North 7th Street, Kansas City, Kansas, regarding adoption of resolutions and ordinances regarding the BPU pilot, the sewer service charge, solid waste fee, self-supported municipal improvement district, the 2025 amended City of Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County, Kansas budget, and the 2026 proposed budget for the City of Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County, Kansas.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Roll call.
Please.
Roll call. Townsend?
Here.
Burns?
Here.
Ramirez?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Kane?
Here.
Lopez?
Here.
Stites?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Bynum?
Here.
Burrows?
Here.
Garner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Committee, we have a lot of work ahead of us tonight. I'll ask the clerk if there are any revisions to tonight's agenda.
There are no revisions.
Thank you. Tonight, we have first order of business as the administrator's agenda, and it is the budget items. However, there are various budget elements within the item. Each element will require a separate vote. At this time, I will turn the matter over to our county administrator, David Johnston, for comment. Mr. Johnston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, thank you for hosting this meeting. Just to give you a brief overview of where we are and how we got here through the budget process, a few months ago, the direction that we started was discussing the mill cap. And at that time, I proposed with staff's help, a mill cap rate of five mils. The feedback that I received from you, the commission, was, no, we needed to have it lower. Make some adjustments to to make that a reality. Came back a little bit while later and came back with a three-mil cap with a with a promise that the budget, proposed budget that I will present to you, would be less than two mils on both the city and the county. That I did present to you, which is part of my required job, a proposed balance budget for your consideration. At that time, after discussion with the commission, there was a desire, David, can you drop the city mill rate a little bit lower than the two-mil increase proposed? Staff and I got together and came up with approximately one-half-mil adjustment, about $1 million. And that's a combination of cuts and using other funds that we we found to replace using property tax revenue. Thus, that was the last proposed budget that was before you, and we held subsequent meetings with you, and then we had on-threes just recently, this past week with you, to hopefully get toward a final budget for your consideration and your action. With that, that's where we're at. And so I'll have I'll turn the time to Reggie Lindsey, our budget director, to further talk about our conversations and the on-threes and ask for possibly other direction tonight. But I think our our hope is that we would craft, by the end of the meeting, a budget that is satisfactory to our elected body. Reggie?
Thank you, David. Good evening, elected body. So as part of the budget that David Johnston presented back on August 7, one of the things he made sure is that we kept to our goals, which is foster economic development, maintain fiscal sustainability, also maintain customer service, and also continue growing with economic development. And as part of the budget process, we did a citizen survey. We also had budget talks. We also had members from the community here in this in this chamber to give their input on the budget. And some of the most of the things that we heard were fix our roads, reduce the BPU pilot, and show us value for our property tax. So as part of that, we have reduced the pilot to 9.9% in this proposed budget. With the BPU pilot rate going down to 9.9%, it hadn't been this low since 2009, which was 16 years ago. This commission, a few years back in 2022, made a commitment to continually reduce the pilot. And our county administrator, David Johnston, has made sure that, and he continues to want to do that in future budgets also. So we would definitely like to go lower than the 9.9%. Also, as far as the BPU pilot, there's the BPU Pilot Committee, which Mayor Garner put together, also Commissioner Bynum led it, and also at the time before she was elected, Commissioner Hill was part of that. And created where we broke the pilot out into a residential and commercial pilot rates. And as part of that, we also did add income base to to the sales tax and BPU pilot rebate, along with disability. And before we had it, it was just senior citizens. So we did add those three variables to that. And what we're going to do, what's going on here is we, for the most vulnerable citizens in our community, they are impacted by having sales tax rebate and a BPU pilot rebate. And as part of that, they also, when they qualify for that program, their BPU pilot is eliminated for one year. So they're definitely impacting people from what we heard from the citizens with the BPU pilot. The other thing the community said was fix our streets. So as part of this budget, we have built into the budget, we've doubled the amount of money for street preservation. We had $5.5 million within the budget, and we're bumping that up to $11.8 million. Also, we we are are increasing the mill one and a half and two mils, but that mill rate is still lower than it was in 2024. Mill rate was 75 mils in 2024, and we're still at 71 mils, which is four four mils lower. So as part of our presentation tonight, what we're going to do is talk about three items that we did not build into the budget, and we'd like to get you all's input on it and see if there's a way we'd like to build it into the budget or adjust those amounts or not. And then we'd like to move into the budget vote process. So on screen, first item that we have up for discussion is the proposed sheriff's sworn change. Sheriff came back to us, came to us in August during one of our budget workshops and requested 15 additional positions. We do have his budget set at 145 FTEs. After conversations with the county administration office team, sheriff, he settled on he could do with 10 positions. So what County Administrator Johnston and Assistant County Administrator Cobbins spoke about with Sheriff's optic was to increase the FTEs in January by five, and that's a $550,000 impact for 12 months. And then July recruit class, we'd bring on an additional five. And for the remainder of the year, for the six months from July to December, that's a $275,000 impact for a total impact of $825,000. As you see, the chart is showing the 145 FTEs that Sheriff Soptics has in his budget, going across all our pay periods, and that's what that is, going across the page horizontally, and it is the blue straight line. Also, on the page, we have the 2025, where he's at FTE-wise, and then also 2024, we can see where Sheriff Soptic is. So one of the things we could see is, he hasn't quite met his 145 yet in 2025. That's one thing we can see. And in 2024, he kind of hovered around 135 at the beginning of the year and kind of end of the year at about 140 FTEs. Kind of open this up for discussion and see if there's any discussion about this particular item.
Thank you, Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Looking at this, I would like to see the discussion with our sheriff continue, but I have reservations about funding any of these for the 2026 budget right now. This graph is showing that he is not at his his fully sworn and authorized amount of 145 positions. So to commit in the budget for another 10, I'm considering the impact that's going to have on the mills. We're trying to keep the mill increase down. I know that that was the request of a lot of people. We heard actually it was none at all. But we do have to fund the government. I would like to see that continued in 2026 in terms of discussion, but not fund it in this budget. It would be vital to know, I think, what comes along with another body. It's not just salaries. I don't know what other equipment, training. And then the expectation should be that these people are going to, once they join, hopefully be with us till they retire. So I would like to see that discussion continued for 2026. There may be other funding sources available. But that would be on the county, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And we're trying not to go above two mils. That would be half a mil right there what's being asked. So those are just my thoughts on it. Oh, and I have to say this because I did think about me, rest in peace, Officer Ming. So my understanding is, he would be, his position would be backfilled automatically. He's part of that 145. So I was I was relieved to hear that. So this would be another 10. But I we just can't afford it right now. That's the bottom line. But I believe it would be great to have that held over to 2026, but not fund it now. Maybe it can be funded later in 2026.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of on the same wavelength as Commissioner Townsend. You know, unfortunately, we had unfortunate deaths of Deputy Ming and Officer Simon Sick. I don't want, you know, it may be a time where not many people are going to want to enlist in our public safety, in our law enforcement. You know, we're going to continue pushing that. I I don't want to hinder us, but also I don't want to hinder the sheriff's office. His office does an amazing work, amazing job in our community. But I do think we should keep the conversation open and see if we can find some type of compromise. I know we've already compromised from 15 to 10, but maybe there's more that he's willing to work with us on. And as Commissioner Townsend said, maybe there's other outside source, funding sources, or another avenue we can take. I just don't want both sides to be hindered in any way. So that is my take on it at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
The next item that we we want to discuss is the proposed land bank mowing frequency. In 2025's budget, half the budget was cut. So we only have where mowing occurs once a month, as opposed to in 2024, mowing occurred twice a month. So to go back for mowing for twice a month, it'd be $625,000 additional in the county general fund. And this is definitely has been a hot topic during this budget season. And this is also one that we kind of like to open up for discussion with you all.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. It has just been so difficult to live what the revenue-neutral impact on these vacant lots across the city, significant impact in District One and in the eastern part of the city. I don't want to see this cost added in terms of a mill rate. But what I would ask is that the administrator and department heads, whoever else he sees would be needed to make the determination to go back and look at the capital cash funds and also the capital equipment accounts. And this would be on the county side, to look for money that would offset this additional mowing, the 625,000. I looked at these accounts, but I couldn't really say what is going to harm a particular program or equipment that's needed. And I would think that the administrator and his department heads could better identify what things could be reduced or held off to another budget year, so that the cost of this 625,000, so that we can mow these hideous weeds across the city that are owned by the land bank, could could happen. That would not be an increase to the mill levy or at any other dollars. We're taking dollars already in the budget and having the professionals identify, and then they can bring it back to us if there's no question. But that would be what I'd like to see done. And I would say that regardless of where you are in the city, next year, when we have the FIFA come through, this would be something that, you know, should look better for our city. People will remember those things, you know. They don't care what district does it say, looked shaggy or or unkept. And this would be a way we could take care of that without adding anything additional to the budget. That would be my thought.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you, Mayor. The did we take into consider, are these mowing, are these contracts with private vendors? They are. Have we looked at the amount of land bank properties that have been sold or given away to other property owners to reduce the overall cost, to find out how much of an impact that has on the budget? I know it depends on how many lots we've gotten rid of and the size. But the next question I have, has there been contract renegotiations considered to lower the overall cost of the mowing of the land bank?
Shelley Keneven, CFO, we did rebid the mowing contract this last year, and we did get a lot more competitive pricing. Certainly, we could talk with the vendor about other options as well in terms of maybe mowing every other week and what that cost would be with the updated number, to your point, of lots. Or perhaps we could say, what if it's every two and a half weeks or every three weeks, those types of things? And we could always bring that back after the budget is done, but bring that back for information. But we did rebid that actually at the commission and the mayor's urging, and we got a lot more competitive pricing.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I know we have some land bank lots that are landlocked that people can't get back to, so there's a back part of another land bank property. And I don't know what the criteria is for mowing those. I would assume that if they're budding up against other properties and are a nuisance, some of our citizens and residents are mowing those properties and assisting in keeping the community beautified. I'm glad to hear that we're rebidding the project. I would ask that we go back and look at how many land bank properties that have been sold and or transferred that will lower that cost a little bit, and then identify which land bank properties that are landlocked that may not require every two weeks mowing. If we could lower the cost of that substantially, it may help in in how much money we spend on that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, and appreciate your comments, Commissioner Burrows. We're we had a backlog of like close to 300 applications, because folks wanted to just have a yard extension, or they wanted to have a garden of some sort, or they're in the situation you're expressing, which is they were taking care of UG-owned property. We are almost through, I think, our last meeting on the 28th. We'll get through that backlog. And it's close to about 300 properties that we're talking. And so we should be able to get that that information to the commission. And I'll also add, and I'll agree, particularly for the east side of town, this is really, really difficult, because it depends on if you live near land bank properties, if this matters. But perhaps staff can come back to the commission sometime in late spring, early summer, and we can look at some of those capital projects that Commissioner Townsend was mentioning. And if there has been some cost savings where we thought something was going to bid at much higher than what we anticipated, we could perhaps use that cost savings and increase it. And maybe it's not twice a month, maybe it's twice every six weeks, right? Or or something to where there could be some sort of of progress. And so while I'm not necessarily interested in a mill increase for this item, given the current state of the county, county's finances, I do believe we should keep having ongoing discussion about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, if I neglected to say that this proposal would not increase anything in the mill levy. The other thing Commissioner Burrows made a good point, the other thing to look at and consider when we go back and look at who's got what, are any number of land bank holes, particularly in my district, for things that will be breaking ground, either right before Christmas or or December or after. And once those lots are assigned to someone, that is their responsibility. Reminded them, a public service announcement reminded to that regard. So that's something else that while we still own title, those awardees have that responsibility. And it would be a good way to check on that they're fulfilling that as well. But but this proposal to have the administrator and his heads and whoever else he would need to go back and look at the accounts, the capital and capital equipment, capital cash, would not impact negatively mill rate at all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, no mill increase on this item, but continue discussion, updates from staff of how funding is going and bidding and all of that. Yeah, I I don't support the mill increase, but let's continue talking and discussing this further. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend? Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear, I am proposing this be added in, just so I'm clear. But it would just be offset, the 625,000 would be offset by what the administrator and and his staff could find. So this would be no additional dollars, just an offset. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think one thing as well, that mowing and the blight and the beautification aspect, that I know that a lot of our residents have been concerned about, along with the staff and commission and myself, is not so much the frequency, which is great, getting back to the frequency, but the quality of the service that we're getting. Because I know, looking back, there was a lot of lot to be desired from these some contractors that mowed or mowed our our areas that were highly visible in our right-ofways and things of like of that nature, that it looks like they came through and they did a half job. And so, I mean, they'd mow patches here and patches there. I mean, you'd mow, and I'd see weeds still growing that they missed and then cut. So making sure that we manage that appropriately and hold these vendors accountable to their contract and to the expectations that we have for them to do the job that we paid them to do, I think, is really key going along with the frequency. And it might aid in that beautification that we're seeking if if they do the job the right the first time, so they don't have as much to tackle when they circle back. Hopefully, these contracts have clawback measures in them, that if they aren't meeting expectation, we can fall back on another contractor vendor that hopefully can do a better job, and that we stay on top of that. Because it, you know, when you talk about spending taxpayers' dollars for them to come out and do a job, and then you go out and look at the job that they've done, and it it leaves a lot to be desired. I mean, it does a disservice, not just to our our community, but to our taxpayers as well. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you for adding that point, Mayor, because it's a reminder that the least expensive bid is not the best bid overall. So there would be some people I would not recommend that we use again. And then there are some who do a top-notch job. So just thank you for that point and making that clear, because it is, we expect a quality job for whoever the vendor is. But the cheapest is not always the best job. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is either they are the administrator or budget staff, going to what Commissioner Townsend said, if we were to add this item into the budget and expecting an offset, but offsets don't come out to be that amount, what happens then?
So I believe, I mean, we could just like put the money and put it back into a surplus or so. That's what that's what would happen. As far as like, I mean, it would just fall to the bottom line, or we could put it towards another dollar or another item or project or so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. I would think if no money is found, we're nowhere's off. We're at the at the one cut cycle again. But we have some leeway we didn't have last year. So I would hope that we could find something. But we're nowhere's off for looking with that. Maybe the administrator has another view, but.
What I'm hearing is that you want us to look for offsets within capital cash accounts, if we can defer some of those to get as close to the 625 as possible that way. If we can't find all that 625, we'll let you know before anything happens. But it's not going to be But it's not going to be a funded project at 1.2 million dollars. But in the budget, we will, we are tasked to try to find that extra 625 in offsets. That's, I think, all we can promise at this time. If we can find any, let's say we can, let's find half of that. We can apply that to the worst part of the growing season where it gets more rain. I mean, that's when it was coming from you and some of your other colleagues on the commission and from our citizens. It's when, you know, weeds and grass love water, and we had a particularly wet June this year. And so fast growth after you mow and you get the rain that we had, they love it, so they're going to grow faster than maybe other years that we, we've had the mowing going on. Maybe we have to readdress when we use money that we can find, but we won't do that until we get your blessing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bino?
Mayor, thanks. I would support that action, looking for the offsets. And like you said, you could just keep us posted, and if we find them, we find them, we get more mowing. If we don't, we don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrows?
And Mr. Johnston, I want to make sure I fully understand, and maybe you explained it and I just didn't catch it. The, the 625 that's being requested to be put in, we will look at an opportunity to reduce that cost through some of the recommendations that have been made, either rebuild contracts, look at how many properties we still have, any landlocked properties. If there's any money left over, is there a way to shift that possibly over to the sheriff's request?
Regional Lindsay Unified Government Budget Director, yes, that, that would be possible. But one of the things with sheriff is his is a recurring cost, and this would be one-time money.
Understood, but I know it was asked that by Commissioner Townsend, that we continue to have dialogue with the sheriff. Any money that is found will help in that discussion. And anytime we can save money on, on a program by rebidding it or identifying cost reductions associated that, I mean, fuel costs aren't as high as they were two years ago, but you know, they could creep back up and become exorbitant again, but they could also stabilize and stay where they are, which allow for flat budgeting. I guess my, my concern is, I know we have a request by the sheriff, and public, that public safety aspect should be critical when it comes to finding additional dollars versus mowing. And I know one's an eyesore, but the other one is, is a community-wide public safety issue. And so if there was any opportunity to save any money, I, I think what I heard was that the 625 would go in the budget, but even if we didn't find any cuts or we didn't find any savings, that 625 would be spent.
We have already, whoops. We've already put 625,000 in the budget. That replicates what we're doing this year. What the request was, find an additional to get to that twice a month mowing, and that's where that additional 625 request is coming from.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stites?
Stites District 7. When did, has the, has the land bank always been a county function since consolidation? And if not, when did it get switched to the county? The reason that I'm asking this is 99% of the parcels are in Kansas City, Kansas. And when, when contacted by the mayor of Bonner Springs and asked about the land bank parcels, they had one that required mowing two years ago. And when they reached out to the, they were, when they reached out to the UG, they were told, we're not gonna, we're not gonna drive all the way out there to mow one, one property. It seems as if this may be better suited, and, and I'm just asking, that this is, should be shifted to the city side of the, of the city item, not a county. So I'll let you answer the first part first to find out if this has always been on the since consolidation.
So Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director, we did look into the history of the land bank. The land bank has, was established as a county land bank in Wyandotte County. The full cost for the land bank that, that we had in economic development were always funded out of the county general fund. There is a mixed history on the mowing. I know our processes have changed over time, and currently we have mowing in both the city and the county fund for, for these lots. There used to be other lots that were mowed with that funding as well. And again, our processes have changed over time.
Well, I guess what I would say then, maybe we need to look at changing the process, right? If, if the county side, all of the county is not having, is utilizing this, maybe it needs to get shifted back. And we're already looking at a, a stressed county budget, right? We're talking about it right now, where there's not a lot of growth on the county side, but yet we continue to tax the county side of the, I'mma call it of the ledger. So maybe there's, we need to look at getting this shifted back to the city side where it's, where it's, where it's stronger. The other thing too is what I would like to ask is about the, here's the deal, we need to get rid of the land bank properties. I mean, I, I don't know why we are the largest land owner in the county. Let's get them gone. Let's get them, let's turn them in. We're talking about Commissioner Burrows talked about the people that are, you know, wanting to extend, expend, I think it was Commissioner Burrows, sorry if I'm wrong, that they're mowing, they're taking care of them now. Let's get them, let's, let's see if people want to buy them and get them gone. I don't know why, why we're, we're holding on to these. I don't, and I don't think that we're intentionally just trying to hold on to it. Maybe we are, I don't know. But we, we need to get rid of some of them. Last thing that I will bring up would be, so does, does BPU contract with any mowing companies? I'll wait.
Counselor?
Yes, this is Angela Lawson. I believe they do.
So with that being said, I'm sure then, since we're talking about mowing contracts and, and how we can get the best bang for our buck, I'm sure we've probably reached out to them to find out who they use and see if we can piggyback or, or, or make this contract bigger to, to take care of our mowing.
Yes, that would be an option.
So we haven't done that, is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't believe so, but I don't know. I would, I would not have been involved with that if we had.
Well, I mean, I would, I guess, do we have people there now that have, that can say that they've reached out or not reached out to find out if there is a better contract to be had? And I guess where I'm going with all of this is this is, this is that joint communication that I think is lacking, where we have duplicity and we're not contacting BPU, which is, some say we are a department or we're not a department, or they're not a department in unified government, but we are not tasked or utilizing their contractors that they use. There's no communication back and forth about this on how we're going to try to save money or if there's a, a more better, if you will, way to bake the cake.
I guess to answer your question, Commissioner, is we have not reached out to BPU, but we have done our own bidding process to try to get the best following our procurement policies. And that's, that's, that's the best I think we can answer at this time. But we can always reach out to BPU to see if we can solicit their contractors for add-ons, see if they're willing to do that.
Yeah, I guess that seems kind of, and I, I guess seems kind of ridiculous to me, to be honest. And I'm not trying to be mean about it, but it seems ridiculous that we are not thinking outside the box here on how we try to accomplish, accomplish this. And I guess, Administrator, since you're, can you answer about the, the land bank being on the city side versus the county side?
Well, it's set up in ordinance to be a county land bank, and it's been funded as a county function since inception. We would have to see if it can be a city land bank. So Counselor, you want to add some wisdom?
Yes, thank you, Angela Lawson. So originally, we had, it was organized under state statute, under county land banks. I think it allowed statute, state statute allowed Wyandotte County land banks first, then other county land banks, and then there was a statute later on that was enacted for city land banks. But we would have to dissolve the county structure and then reconstitute as a city land bank structure.
And then what, and then what I think that might be possible then is if there, that does then in fact become land bank properties in the other two cities, that, that we maybe all a cart, right? Right? If they need, if they need mowing done. But right now, they're getting zero out of it. Not, not, not a mowing. Matter of fact, being told, we're not coming out there to mow just one. So I would, I would encourage us to look at, and we'll be pushing for, the dissolvement of the county land bank and put this on the more correct side of the ledger, which would be the city side. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. To coincide with that, I think I've advocated for that as well, just the biggest thing that Commissioner Stites had hit on, and I appreciate that, was looking at duplication of services and see how we can operate a little more efficiently, especially when the BPU is, is not just a satellite organization. It's, it's owned in whole by this unified government and building those relationships as far as communicating effectively, seeing how we can better collaborate and hone in our services. I believe that was done a little bit with Public Works. I know the Public Works Director is talking with the folks at BPU to make sure that they're, they're cooperating when they dig up streets and things of those natures, so they don't go back and have to repatch something that was dug up. Those, those conversations were really encouraged, and I'm seeing positive results with that. But I think, I agree with Commissioner Stites, we can take that conversation a little bit further to see if, are there any duplications of services? Do we need to consolidate? Should this board consider consolidating departments even further to bring about enhanced efficiencies that could save our taxpayers money? I totally support and agree with Commissioner Stites. That's something that we should be intentional about looking at, because any dime saved is, is, is going to be a dollar of relief for our residents. Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, I was looking at that parcel that Commissioner Stites was talking about out in Edwardsville, and I don't know why we just don't go to the two neighbors on both sides of it and say, hey, this is what we'll sell it to you for, you want to split it, or is one neighbor want to buy the whole thing? But we make it difficult because now we have something implemented that if someone wants to build on the land bank parcel, they have to, or wants to buy a land bank parcel, they have to build on it. Well, just, just sell it and let them decide whether they want to build on it or not. At least we're not, we got rid of it, they're paying taxes on it, whoever buys it, and who cares if they built anything on it? They're, they're mowing it, and it's not costing us anything. So, and then there is, we do have a big handful of land bank parcels that are flood zones or whatever, you just can't build on it. But again, if one of the neighbors want to buy it, just sell it to them and get rid of it and be done. Real simple. Real simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. And Commissioner Lopez and Commissioner Stites, I think, you know, share the same sentiments. It's why we went through the policy revision that does just that. And so if folks are interested in acquiring land bank lots, they do not have to build anything that's brick and mortar. They do not have to build a home. They could acquire that land as a yard extension and be done with it. And it's a benefit for us because we don't have to pay for the mowing, it's a benefit for that resident, because now they have access to that land and they are responsible for the upkeep of it. If y'all have other folks that would be interested in acquiring land in the land bank, please do send them our way, because we need as many folks that are interested as possible to build up our community and to dispose of those properties that we own. I think it's a travesty that staff told those folks out there in Bonner Springs and Edwardsville that it wasn't worth it. I think every land bank lot should have been addressed, and so that is a failure on our part, and we should quickly remedy that. But if those residents are interested in acquiring that land, I'd be more than happy to put them on the agenda, work with you all, and get them access so that they have ownership. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And maybe you can answer this, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Davis has done a lot of work with our land bank director, Judd Knapp. One of the things that, that I had advocated for was with all the land bank lots and looking at all the economic development opportunities we have, I've seen in other cities and what other mayors and councils have done, is they, they try and find as much land as they can, and they create economic development, redevelopment, empowerment zones to where these parcels within a certain area, and if they need to buy the patchwork of parcels in between, they buy it, create a clean slate to really grow and build certain parts of our community and really enhance the economic development incentives, particularly those areas that have been underserved, to get developers to come in and build and entrepreneurs, businesses, as a means to anchor people in our county, like I've always said, but also grow our tax base. And when you've got 4,500 parcels plus, I believe, give or take around that, around that amount. I, I just, the, the question I have, is there any thing that's being done with intention to look at it, our land bank parcels from an economic development standpoint, to see what land is there and how we can build those types of economic development opportunity zones, if you want to call them that, create incentives and, and really fill this up in a way that, that can hopefully build upon. But then the other part, I agree with Commissioner Stites and Lopez, it's another thing that I've advocated for with them, is other parcels of land, is there anything in the current policy that, and I think this is clear for the public, I know you can come and get a land extension, but outside of those, those lots, it may not be favorable that someone doesn't live next to, working with our staff to put a for sale sign up and, and market these, these land bank properties and sell them on the open market at, at market rate or below market rate? I don't, I don't know if that's something that, that's been taken into account, the policy. And Commissioner Davis, maybe you can answer some of it.
Yeah, I can get to some of that. So it's my understanding that economic development has another position that is added within this budget, and that is actually to assist with our redevelopment efforts, particularly on the east side of town. And so we definitely need more people. I don't think we've done as much as we can on the marketing side. Quite frankly, we've been really, really focused on helping our residents get access, because for about two years, they've been told they have to build something on that parcel or they will not have access. And so that has been a focus. There has been a movement within Program Falcon, putting down an RFP. There's also a neighborhood plan with Douglas Sumner, and I don't want to get too ahead because I know they're in still the beginning stages where they're actually looking at just that mayor of having a more targeted approach of consolidating parcels into one area and including some other incentives, not just here locally, but from the state. That would be a game changer and entice development. And so it's taken some time. This policy revision is not even a year old, but I do think that when it's all said and done after that first year, we will see sizable results, not only in the disposal of land bank parcels, but some of the builders that have come in and have built new homes. And so all really good ideas and discussion and open to continuing to have those conversations so that we can be just more aggressive on this. We do also have, I'll add, community development. We passed the new annual action plan that does have home dollars, I think it's about $2 million, $35,000 for rebates for developers to entice them and to incentivize them to build again. That is new. And so there are some new things that are happening using local, state, and federal dollars and resources. We knew, we do need to revitalize. Um we knew, we do need to revitalize and revamp the Neighborhood Revitalization Act as well. That's going to be a process. Uh but there has been some some movement and um I'm really excited about this conversation and hope we can have more. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah. The, there is a land bank parcel that a a lady used to call me about. It's not in my district, um but she still called me about it, um that she's been trying to get. And it's it's just, it butts up to her backyard. But uh again, and I, some of it, I don't know why we just don't, you know, just give it to, give it to the folks because they're going to be paying taxes on it anyway, rather than selling it. Uh it'd just be easier. But um yeah, that's just something that uh me, maybe me and Commissioner Davis can have a conversation about that one. To see what all that entails for her to do. I know that she's been trying to get it, but um okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next item that's up for discussion is iris service change. Uh so we had iris, we have iris right now and it's a grant uh that's funded until February of twenty twenty six. Uh to keep that grant going, uh there's an eight hundred and ninety thousand dollar request that we do not have built into the budget. However, our transit director, Desiree Bush, she did come back with another option, a bare bones option to continue the limited service. And when the grant expires to um have two hundred and seven thousand dollars of funding, uh which would give us a bare bone service where we'd have one driver instead of four drivers. The driver does not work for for us, it is a contracted position. Uh but it'd be a two hundred and seven thousand dollar impact on the twenty twenty six budget when that grant runs out. So there's uh the option to uh spend into reserves uh to pay for this or add uh additional milage, which would be in an amount of like point one mils to fund this. Or to do an offset with it with it with a different expense. And again, this is an item that we'd like to open up for the elected body to also discuss.
Thank you, Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I I met with uh Ms. Bush and she explained again, as she had us before, the impact of us losing two, I believe, contract bus routes and how many people relied across the city on that service to be able to get to work, to get to school. Uh she talked about iris, so um I would support the bare bones ask that she made, which was to have uh one iris driver. Currently, the grant, which will expire at the end of February twenty twenty six, provides two. And she said that once iris uh began, and particularly in the northeast end, the ridership just exploded, I don't have the numbers with me, but was impressive enough that if we could keep this going, even at the bare bones level, again, as an offset, uh my ask would be that the administrator, again, department heads, staff that he believes would be appropriate, would fund this as an offset. Um and that, I guess, the first place to look would be, this would be a city expense. So again, the city capital cash accounts, capital um expense accounts to see if there would be two hundred and seven thousand to offset uh that. Uh I'm not supportive of an additional mil increase or the reserves, when looked at the reserves, we need to stay away from getting into the red ink as much as possible in the uh years to come. So or and even now, so um I would be very supportive of the two hundred and seven thousand requests, but as an offset. And would ask that the administrator and staff look for that money and again, come back and let this know, but the with the intention of actually funding this. I know now it's not in in the budget, but that would be the goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a typical example of when we get a grant like this, that it comes to an end. And unless we see things in the years before it expires to kind of get it into the budget, it has to end, you know? Grants are fine, but there's an ending point to them. And a lot of the grants, for example, like I've seen with the police and everything and then community corrections, there's a cat, you know, there's no cash match and it comes to an end at the end of that period, unless, of course, they re-up. So I think we need to keep in mind when, and this is a typical example, and I sympathize with those riders, but uh when it's over, it's over. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. Did did uh Desiree talk about additional fee charges, an increase in the fee charge for the iris? Um I know it's relatively low. That I know there was discussion had about quite possibly increasing the fee so that we could make up some of that difference. And I guess this this bodes back to one of the comments I made a couple of weeks ago, that we look at a um s- some kind of a funding mechanism, a county wide, metro wide funding mechanism so that collectively, if iris is that important, public transportation is that important and the support of the people uh want to do it, then we put it on the ballot and find a revenue stream that allows us to fund uh the uh public transportation. If we're going to continue to support it, we know the costs are going to go up and it's going to impact our budget every year. And so it may be time that we look at putting an initiative on the ballot to support public transportation so it has its own funding source. Uh that would just be my comment and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So so in summary, uh we we did just speak about the land bank uh mowing, adding additional six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars or uh reducing it to an amount where we're maybe mowing every every three weeks instead of every two weeks or going going that route. And then we also did talk about, and it seems like everyone uh wants to maybe get that within the budget or it it may be a consensus to put that in the budget some at some form. And then next, we talked about uh Sheriff's Department with requests for ten additional positions. From conversation we had tonight, looks like there may be something we would be waiting to try to work into the budget until the twenty twenty six budget process or the twenty twenty seven budget process or something we would work on next year on getting into the budget. And then iris, uh seems like we definitely want to get that built into the to the budget at two hundred and seven thousand dollars uh from what I'm what I'm gathering.
If I might add, what I've heard on uh the last two items that we talked about, the land bank mowing frequency and the proposed transit iris service, preferred is to see if we could find offset funding within uh the proposed budget and then come and tell you that we found it inside on the um on the land bank. If we can't find additional funds, if we find any funds, let you know and maybe come up with a different frequency approach that that would fund, but uh we'll we'll still come back to you.
Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you, Mayor. Angela, and Angela, the you said that this was put in as a county function and then went to a city function? Or it was a city and then county?
It um it was state statutes allowed for it to be a wind out county function. And then, so with wind out county enabled their land bank and then state statute expanded it to let other counties. And then there was legislation that allowed cities to do it. So it's always been a county function under law. It's just that now you could also, if you wanted to reconstitute it as a city, you would have to go through that process. But there is a process available to make it a city function.
Was that prior to consolidation?
I don't believe so. I believe it was, land bank was prior to. Okay. Well.
The the reason why this this gets into a legal question and that's what I would ask that you research, that if it was a county function prior to uh consolidation, when we became a unified government, then I don't know how it is that we can't use city funds to address some of this property. I mean, we had special legislation that identified us as a county and a city. Uh I guess my comment would be, and maybe this would go back to Commissioner Stites and Commissioner Lopez's comment, that if a majority of the land banks are in Kansas City, Kansas demographics, that we prorate how that comes out of the budget. If seventy percent of the land bank is in the city, those land bank properties come out of the city budget. What count, what land bank property is in the county that's not in Kansas City, Kansas proper, comes out of the county budget. That would give us a clearer delineation as to the property that we own as a city. And uh it might help the budget constraints that we have on the county side.
We'll look into that. We'll we'll look into that, but as our councillor said, it was set up as a county function, therefore it's funded through the county budget. If we want to, and we'll investigate what it would take to give us the get out of that function into a city land bank program, we'll come up with that proposal for further discussion with you folks. But um I don't think it's clear as where it is and who gets to pay. It was set up as a county function, therefore it's funded through the county budget.
And it it was set up in nineteen ninety nine after consolidation.
So that's what we're hearing as direction from you. Look for offset funding right now to continue leading toward a a budget decision. But report shortly afterwards on what we find um on the proposed mowing and the land bank issues. And then the sheriff's discussion will continue with no, nothing included extra in the budget at this time.
I believe that uh this question came to me, uh the DA's budget, there's no change in that as well either.
I'm sorry, sorry.
The DA's budget, there was no change?
There was no change in the DA's budget.
Okay, Commissioner Stites?
Thank you, Stites District Seven. So if it was formed, if if the land bank was formed post consolidation, what was, what was there a, I guess, was there a land bank prior to the formation? Or how was, how was parcels handled?
I'm not aware of a land bank prior to consolidation. Um I believe that was the first land bank that we had. So the, and I'm not sure if the parcels parcels weren't sold at the tax sale, they were probably left for the next time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make sure, uh administrators, so you're looking to or not looking to offset potential funds for iris?
That's what I was hearing from the commission is to see if we can find two hundred and seven thousand dollars somewhere else in the existing budget and take that away and apply it toward iris. Report back to you and get a blessing.
Okay, that, thank you. That's what I would hope. Yeah, those, that would be a city expense, so um similar to uh what I'd asked with the land, you know, the land bank mowing um to look at um capital funds, equipment funds, but this, of course, would be the city, so.
The same approach, ma'am.
Yeah, same approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh just a little history on that. I think, I don't know if it was called land bank many, many years ago at the county. I think it was called the Delinked Real Estate Tax Department that handled that at the time. And I and I think on all our properties and stuff, that didn't have to go through the district court. Angie?
They, I think they went through a tax sale and then the district court does approve um payment plans if someone's retrieving their land from the tax sale. So they do, they do play a role in that.
Which is probably the fountain, why the founders of the uh unified government left it as a county function for that purpose, I'm guessing.
Commissioner Lopez, sir?
So iris is uh from a grant that's going to end. So that means iris ends, bottom line. And put that money that we're looking for, give it to the sheriff that needs it. Oh, um yeah, that's, we're we're looking for funds to keep funding iris, well, that's it's just, it 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 ends, sorry, but it ends, you know, the grant money ends.
Commissioner Lopez, Unified Government Budget Budget Director, Reginald Lindsay. So uh iris is being funded from the city general fund and sheriff, his his funding comes from the county general fund. So we could not apply that money to to the sheriff's department?
So, but it all goes to the same bank account, right? Two different bank accounts?
City has its own reserve funds, account.
I'm just saying, it all, it yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Townsend?
Yeah, thank you. Um it, just a reminder too, this this came up again with the iris because of the loss of several of our uh bus routes. And this will enable our citizens to get to work, to get groceries, to go to school. It's it's just such a a worthy thing. There are a lot of people who don't have um their own private transportation. Again, this is an offset. If we find it, we find it. If we don't, we don't. But I have faith in uh our staff, so it would be worth it to our citizens. And also may be used by those people who are coming in for FIFA next year. Now, if you, they're coming from another country, maybe they can afford Uber, but at three dollars a ride, they may take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stites?
Stites District Seven. So go piggybacking on um exactly what Commissioner Byrne said about this was a grant, it ran out and um it ran its course. Uh I agree. And uh it doesn't mean that we automatically absorb that into a city budget, struggling that we can't um. And I do understand that it is not something that we can just automatically transfer over to the to fund the sheriff's department, you know, save that money and put it over to the sheriff's department. But what it, but my question would be, can that ma- money be used to fix potholes?
Yes, yes, it could. Reginald Lindsay, Unified Government Budget Director. Yes, it could, Commissioner Stites.
It could. Could that money be used to reduce debt?
Before you answer that, I'm going to say that this money has not been budgeted, so it's not available.
I said, if it was budgeted, I will change it if I didn't. If it was budgeted, could that money be used to pay debt?
Shelley Kneven, CFO, um, yes.
Should be pretty simple. Should be pretty simple. Yes or no?
Yes, it could be.
Okay, thank you. Could it also be used to, for tax relief?
Yes, if it's on the city side.
Thank, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Townsend?
Do we need, um, a vote or something to clarify how many would be in favor? So we at least give the administrator clear direction?
They, I.
I don't know if we do or not.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I, I was going to bring that up, a question to the, the commission. Administrator, I believe there were three ons with the commissioners?
Yes, we had three ons with.
I guess if you could share, what, what did you glean from that?
Well, we didn't get consensus on all these issues. And, but these were the ones that were mentioned by more than three, let's say. And therefore we felt it was important to bring it up tonight for, uh, for you to talk about it as a body. Other issues that were brought up, I think, were, um, the desires of the individual commissioners. Uh, that we didn't have anything close to what we would call consensus, maybe. One, two people at the most on, on various issues that came up, but these were the ones that were most commonly brought up.
Again, the, the, the date you're looking at to, for this, um, elected body to make a decision on the budget is the twenty-fifth, correct?
Uh, well, we were hoping that you would have a consensus tonight in, in way you were talking is offsets. Therefore, the existing proposals are acceptable.
I, I think this is what you wanted tonight, but what I'm getting is, is there wasn't a consensus on a lot of items, um, that were brought in the three ons as far as, uh, some of the things that could be cut, things that could be moved, some of the stuff that came out tonight, and I'm just keeping notes, is, um, kind of left me out there. Uh, the sheriff additions, I believe Townsend and Ramirez, and, sorry, Commissioner Townsend and Commissioner Ramirez, uh, weren't in support of the expansion. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong. The mowing, um, I believe there was feedback. Commissioner Townsend wanted to find, uh, offsets in the capital cash account. Uh, Commissioners Stites wanted clarity on shifting it to the city budget. Also made recommendations about selling land bank property. And then looking into the duplication of services to see if savings can be found there. Iris, Commissioner Townsend, um, supported the minimum two hundred and seven, uh, two hundred and seven thousand requests, if it can be found in offsets. Uh, but not is in support of the mill increase, uh, and definitely no, um, dipping into the reserve funds, Commissioner Burns, um, Commissioner Lopez, and Commissioner Stites, um, I believe their recommendations, from my understanding, was as the grant has ended, and therefore it has ended. Um, and Commissioner Burrows, um, uh, requested that, uh, staff look into a ballot initiative, uh, to hopefully offset that. So, um, there's a lot of stuff out there. Um, from the three ons, there were things still floating. Um, I believe, I don't believe, um, from the last budget workshop, um, that we had last two, I would say. Staff did a good job of bringing forward information where this, um, body, um, had options, um, that they could give clear direction to the administrator and staff on various cuts, various program options, uh, things that could be taken off the table to, to bring about savings. What I'm getting from the administrator is, is that, uh, none of those things were brought forward in a, in a, in a manner that, uh, where there was a consensus. So I, I believe it was three, when he made his original budget presentation, and you all took it down to two, uh, I believe two mill increase on the county and a mill and a half increase on the city. Nothing's changed. So, um, in light of that presentation and that recommendation, I think we've had two or maybe even three subsequent, budget workshops and presentation that gave this body options. And, um, my understanding to the, the administrator, nothing has been brought forward to where he has been able to adequately adjust or, um, find additional cost savings, um, um, that can weigh into a recommendation that would reflect, uh, I believe, and I, I didn't bring my notes, I apologize. Um, there was a, a budget workshop where we had where, um, some of the commissioners wanted us to go revenue neutral. Again, some wanted us not, including myself, did not want us to raise any mill, uh, levies at all whatsoever over what, um, the appraised value increase. And then we had, I believe, three commissioners that were okay with, um, the budget as it was proposed. Um, but, um, I believe myself and staff, and I'll just speak for myself, I'm a little bit at a loss, from that conversation. Um, staff came back as they were asked to do, and they took it from five mill increase, I believe, down to the one point two on the, the, the city, or one point five on the city and the two on the county. And they did that on their own. And then the, the requests and the challenge that I made to this commission was, um, staff did their part and did everything we asked them to do. And that the hard decision from this body, um, was brought forth, and I believe in two or three subsequent, um, budget workshops, and there was nothing that was given to our administrator, um, that, uh, as far as, uh, the options that were prevented to, um, that were available to bring about additional savings that might have got us to, um, some of those levels, um, that would, uh, probably find that happy median that, uh, some of us wanted. Again, some revenue neutral on the other end. The budget fully funded as presented originally. And then I think most of us were in the middle. We were comfortable with not much more or right at, uh, not having, uh, a mill increase at all. So, um, these are options as well. I just, uh, uh, if you'd like to have more time, and it's, again, it's not my budget. All the mayor does is recommend, and I work with the administrator on trying to, to look at, uh, feedback that we get from you all, and we work together to get you all a recommendation. But it's your budget. And, uh, if you all are comfortable with what I just described, it, it's your decision to be made. I just wanted to make sure that you know you have a little more time and an opportunity to meet with the administrator, um, to really look at some of those things that a lot of you asked about, even buildings. What does that look like? Um, some of our properties that could be taken off our tax rolls? And what is that, that dollar amount? I don't think we, we had a clear conversation, the C M I P projects. We really didn't have a clear conversation, but all that, that information was provided to you all to look at. So when you had the three ons, um, that information could be brought forward, and you all could make an informed decision on what would be priority. My call to action has always been that we need to better define what essential services are and, um, find cost savings wherever they're going to be if we're not going to go revenue neutral. And then do everything we can to make sure we save, um, the tax dollars money. Working with the administrator, my call to action on staff is innovate, streamline, try and find cost savings where they can while also improving our customer service to our residents. Um, and that, that's the biggest things that, uh, feedback that a lot of our residents have given to me. Okay. Um, Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one of the things that having, uh, time to talk with staff, weren't necessarily three on three, but, but in some more, uh, direct way. To me, it showed that, I think, and not trying to put off anything, but staff, uh, was in a better position than I was to identify the detail and nature of, um, the particular projects or, uh, subject matter in there. Um, and that's why I thought it was reasonable with the offset. I did bring forward some requests for reduction, but for legal reasons, and it was significant dollars, that was not viable. So there was no point in discussing that further, but I did get the clarification from legal and, uh, the administrator staff. So there, I did want to make that correction, and I think they're in a, the better position, uh, which is why I didn't want to see any increase, uh, in what's been proposed. But they, as the professionals, uh, would be in a better position, um, certainly than I to identify the impact of these trade-offs. So I am comfortable with what's been put forward tonight. These other three items, you know, if we're not clear, if we have consensus, we could just take a straw poll and then move on. That's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner. Just a point of clarity, administrator budget recommendations you're giving, this does include the entirety of budget, including all the ancillary budget items that would go into that, is that, is that as well? So the entire budget for twenty twenty-six, including all the other fees and, and things that would go along with that on the pilot, uh, it's my understanding, that's all.
Those are all included in that two mill increase at the county and one and a half mill increase at the city budget.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bino?
Thank you. Uh, clarity for me, looking at twenty twenty-four mill levy rates, the county mill levy rate for twenty twenty-four is thirty-three point four five nine. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Thanks. And the city mill levy rate for twenty twenty-four is thirty-four point four six two. If we, um, raise the city mill levy rate one point five, then the city would be thirty-five point nine six two. Is that right?
That is correct.
Thirty-five point nine six two. The county, if we raised by two, would be thirty-five point four five nine. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm asking so that, um, you know, if we do take a vote tonight, these items are listed on our agenda as vote items that we're very clear about what exactly the mill levy rate is that we're, that we may vote to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kane?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we've got our answers. We asked a lot of questions. We've given staff some options to find cutting here and getting more money for, for the, uh, bus transportation. Uh, I'm ready to vote, you know, because I don't know how much more we can put on staff. And I think it's time to make a decision, go ahead and vote either up or down, and then see what happens. And if, if it's, if we need to adjust later, but let's just get it done today, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Commissioner Evelyn Hill, District Four. I, I want to thank all of, uh, the staff for their, their hard work. Uh, also, uh, just want to say thank you to, uh, my fellow commissioners. I really appreciated, uh, what has been said and the questions asked. And, um, uh, I really liked, uh, what Commissioner Burrows mentioned about checking with the, the contracts with the, uh, mowing. Um, I like the options of going back and looking, uh, for dollars, even though, uh, our county administrator is saying we've already cut the fat, we're down to the bone. Uh, but I appreciate, uh, him being willing, him and his team being willing to go back. But at the end of the day, I agree with Commissioner Kane. I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, to agree, I think we've got all fine consensus tonight. Um, we've gone through this budget process, very lengthy budget process. So that staff and the community, my consensus would I support one and a half on the city, two on the, two on the county, and with the other two budget items, if we can build them in with offsets, let's do it. If we can't, we'll, staff will tell us if they can or cannot. Um, I, I agree. Let's just get to voting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, administrator, can, what about, uh, reducing the fund balance twelve percent? Where's your room for that?
Well, you really don't have much room to reduce the fund balance at the county level because you do need to have a fund balance. The, reducing more on the city side goes against an established policy of the commission to try to get to a twenty-five percent reserve. And therefore, if you want to cut it down further, then you're going against your own policy.
Yeah, I know it's cutting it, but yeah, there's just still some more questions I have that, especially on, on the mowing. You know, um, I'm kind of all over the place here, I know, but like the, the mowing is, uh, I believe it's like, uh, somebody was asking, who mows for BPU? And I believe it's Signature. And the land bank and all that, but, but what I see is like our medians are fine. What I see is roads aren't, aren't being mowed. Yet we're asking for more mowers and more, well, why? Well, we don't use them anyway, so why do we need more? So, okay, thank you.
What we're asking on the mowing side, um, recommendations from a couple of the commissioners was to increase the land bank mowing.
Well, that's, that's when we bid it out, right? Or, or we just mow it down once and then spray weeds on it and kill everything and don't have to mow it again?
Well, we, we, we do best practices, and right now it's not using, poison to kill grass because a lot of neighborhoods like to have green in their neighborhood.
Yeah.
So it's, it's weed.
Well, they don't have the grass anyway. It's all full of weeds.
Twice a month is what, what is the recommendation from a couple of your colleagues?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stites?
Stites District Seven. My question's, uh, relatively simple. Um, I just want to know if, if the proposed budget, one, one point five mill increase, on the city side and a two mill increase on the county side, on top of the, um, the, the two point three, um, natural occurring for the evaluations, um, on, on a, I'll just say a two hundred thousand dollar house, how much money are we raising taxpayers that are going to be paid on the city side and, and on the county side? As, so that they can hear how much more taxes they're going to need to come up with? Commissioner Stites, as Reginald Lindsay, Unified Government Budget Director, uh, we do not have that number here right now. So we don't, on a, I mean, throughout the whole budget process, we've used, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. What was it? I mean, should, I don't know. It shouldn't be that hard to figure out on a two hundred thousand dollar house, how much more, uh, what's the incremental difference from last year to this year that they're going to need to come up with? And and I'm not there, so I can't see. Are you guys? Is somebody trying to figure this out or am I? I just don't want to.
Yes, we're trying to figure it out.
I can't I can't see nobody, so I can't tell what's happening. Sorry.
Yeah, just stand by. Their staff is working, trying to get.
I'm 10 I'm 10 six.
Shelley Keneven, Chief Financial Officer. On the city side, I just calculated that. I haven't done the county yet, but on the city side with one and a half mills increase. I did it on $100,000 house, so you can just double it if you want to say 200 or triple it if you want to see 300. It would be a difference of $17.23 from what they pay now to what they would pay. And that's just saying if your assessed value is $100,000. Okay, so I didn't change like it used to be 90,000. Now it's 100. I didn't change those variables. I just said if the.
Is that a month? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Is that a month?
No, that's the whole year. You take the value, right, to get the assessed value. It's eleven and a half percent. Then you times it times the mill rate. So I did the old mill rate versus the new mill rate. And then you divide it by 1,000. That's how you calculate your tax bill. So the old rate would have been for the city. Again, I only done so far the city, $384.77. And now it would be $402 and some odd cents. So the difference was $17.23. That is on $100,000 value. So if your value right now is 100,000, I don't know what your value was last year because it'll change for everybody.
Okay, now, so on the on the city side at $100,000, which I don't I don't in previous in previous budget meetings, I think we were started using the number of $200,000, I think was the number. So at at 200,000, just on the on the city side, it's 34. And that's on that's on the the city side and then how much on the county side? Because what it's interesting, because I seem to remember on that hundred on the $200,000 number. And I don't remember, and maybe Commissioner Burrows does, because I think he had written it down, but I don't have it in front of me. It seemed to me like it was nearly $200 on the city and 200 on the county. But but I I I very well could be wrong on that.
Commissioner, I know that we have provided you all a lot of of data. I think you might be thinking about when we did the five mil calculation or the three mil calculation because there's been so many budget workshops. And so just to remember that when we certified the maximum real mill rate, that was at the three mills. So that might be some of the confusion in terms of those different numbers. You're right. One of the presentations used an example of 200,000. Another used 100,000, just looking for the right way to communicate in the most simple way so people can calculate their bill for themselves. So apologize that there's been a couple of different ways. We've tried to communicate that. And then when our mill rate has been changing, that's, you know, that has also been part of the issue, the mag. Some of them that now are down to one and a half, not two. So that's some of the differences, but.
And I think maybe maybe moving on for commissioners that will be here for the next budget, that maybe just a suggestion that we could maybe just try to find a a number that we use and stick with it. Like the valuation is 100,000 or it's 200 or it's 300, whatever the number is. That way we're we're staying consistent with that that part of it. I think that would kind of kind of help. Now, also not. Yeah, so the these increases, right? And I know we're only voting on on what what we control when we control, but we talk about all of the other taxing entities, you know, that are exceeding revenue neutral that that definitely has has an impact. So I think I'll be ready for that county side whenever you whenever you have it, if if that's possible.
Commissioner, this is Shelley Keneven, CFO. So on the county side, it goes from, again, I'm just using 100,000, okay? So it goes from $396.31 to about $413.56. So the difference is $17.25. So between.
That's two mills?
That's on, uh huh, that's on the county side. That was it going from 34.462 to the, well, wait a minute, let me check my math. I might have done only one. I think I only did one. Thank you. I apologize. It goes from 396 and some change to 425 and some change. So it goes up $28.75.
So $28 per 100,000 valuation.
Correct.
Per year.
Correct.
Per year on this on the county side. And then on the city side, it was, did you tell me $17 dollars per 100,000? So everybody at home can do their own math, right, and know how much more we're asking for.
That's right. Yeah. To educate people, you look at your, so you have your appraised value. That's the full dollar amount. And then you take it by eleven and a half percent. That's what the state law tells us to get to your assessed value. Okay, then you take that times the mill rate, whatever it is for whatever district you want to calculate it for. And then you divide it by 1,000. And that tells you how much the taxes are that you will owe. And you are asking for the difference from last year to this year. And so for the two, the 28 and the 17, it's roughly $45, almost $46 for 100,000 appraised value. And that's 11,500 assessed value, just so that people understand that whole formula. And it is on our website. There's a very good explanation that people can go and click on. How do I calculate my tax bill? And it has that formula so that you can go on there and calculate it for yourself.
Okay, I appreciate that. And and just for the ones that are that have seemed to be pretty interested in Edwardsville during this budget cycle, Edwardsville did go revenue neutral this year. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lopez. Yeah, I want to kind of piggyback off of Commissioner Stites a little bit is is that also the the value increase calculated? Of course, we probably don't know that yet.
Commissioner, I did not convert the assessed value into some kind of mill equivalent. Because for people to understand how it actually affects them, they have to look at their own real property and see how their assessed value changed because we don't want to misrepresent what's going to happen to your house. If your assessed value went up, if it went down, stayed about the same, it's going to be a different answer for everyone. We do know on the whole, okay, that we did see an increase in assessed value of roughly 7%. But for my calculations, this example, I just said if you have 100,000 assessed value for residential, then this is the way you calculate it. And I just did apples to apples comparison based on the mill rate being the variable that changed. I had I didn't fiddle with the assessed value that changed, although I know that it has changed for people. It just has changed at different rates. So I want people to really understand how to calculate their own tax bill so they can see what the real impact would be.
And it's schools and the college that rack up.
Correct, Commissioners.
That's what drives our taxes through the roof is.
So the calculations would be the same, though. So somebody could look at, meaning my house is 100,000, my assessed value is 11 and a half percent. I could look at what the college or the school district or any taxing district I wanted to look at and what their change is. And I would be able to calculate how much of my tax bill, if it's increasing, how much of my tax bill is attributed to that taxing district. The formula is the same for all those taxing districts. The mill rate is the thing that each one of the taxing districts can can affect and they set.
Okay. I think. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lopez. I'm sorry. Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope to be able to clarify this. The the people listening are probably a little bit lost because many of us understand what's going on to a certain degree. We deal with it every day in in our commission and budget meetings. But the general public may have trouble digesting this, so let me, I'm going to do my part to help here. So the new assessed value for the county was 2.3%, if I remember correctly, in natural assessment and 2.3 for the city. Is that not correct?
And you, I think you're referring to mills, additional mills.
I'm referring to the growth in appraised value was 2.3 for the city in mills. Yes, it would be mills. It would be 2.3 in the city, 2.3 in the county. That was our base. Is that correct?
That that is correct.
And then there's a proposal to put the additional mills on top of that. The one and a half and the two, if I'm correct. So that adds up. If my math serves me correctly, and I apologize if it doesn't, but I'm looking at 8.1% or 8.1 mills.
That's correct.
And roughly at about 2 million, give or take, a couple hundred thousand on city and county variant. We're looking at anywhere from 16.5 to 18 million dollars in general fund increases from property tax. Spread across the county through.
Did you say, did you say 16 million?
Yeah, at at 2 million, at eight, 8.1 at 2 million, that's 16, 16.2 million. But some of it, some of it may be more in the county, some of it may be less in the city. I I'm just trying to get around number of close to a little over $2 million. I remember the budget discussions going through all this that I believe the city or county had more valuation and then the city did in their mills. So I just remember looking at it, thinking it's very close to $2 million a mill.
And you're you're correct, and it is a $16 million.
Okay, thank you. That's that's and then the point one and additional monies, if we put them in there that will, if they should go in, that's what it will be, the additional dollars we talked about. And our ending fund balance that we have in the city, we we talk about violating our own policy at 25%. I think that was a recommendation by staff at one time to have 25%. But we were also supposed to have an emergency reserve also that we were working on. Do we know where that emergency reserve is at? I remember under our former budget director, she also talked about having an emergency reserve that was additional to the 25% reserve that we had. Did we ever establish that?
A distinction in the policy, and it's actually recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. Probably every city and county has a 25% policy. It's not unique to Wyandotte County. But it says in that policy, 17% in order to cover three months of operating expenses, but up to 25% for emergencies. So it's probably that differential, but it's all one reserve.
Thank you for that clarification because I do remember that discussion coming up at one time. So we could actually lower the ending balance should we want to, but that's a practice we're trying to get away from because that's what's forced us go with a revenue neutral, to quit borrowing from our ending balance to ensure that we can work our way to find a balanced budget process. So it would be doing, it'd be going against what this commission started a couple of years ago in the discussion of revenue neutral.
That's correct. A good practice for financial sustainability is not to use your fund balance to fund your ongoing operations. However, the budget is so tight this year, we are recommending that we dip into the fund balance a small amount with the administrator's budget. We're just not recommending that you do any further because particularly because on the county side, I think Reggie's slide said it was 3% fund balance, not even anywhere close to the 17 to 25%. And then I believe it's 18 or 19% that's on the the city side. So but we are dipping into it a small amount, but that was one of the things through the historical analysis that showed that was part of what got us into some trouble historically. But we are in a very, very tight budget, as you all know.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I just wanted the public to realize that we're going to be raising 16 more million dollars minimum through the increase in property tax proposals in the mills that were that are being proposed this evening. And then that the one last question I have, and I appreciate the commission's patience. This, if we should vote at this time to accept this budget, this will have all the fee increases that are proposed with the BPU pilot reduction, the fee increase for waste management and the stormwater and water fees, all of those to be included in this budget if we vote tonight on this one item.
There's there's, did you say stormwater?
Yes, are we going to vote separately?
There's not an increase for stormwater, but all the other ones you.
Stormwater was approved for a three year rate, so there's nothing for the commission to approve. There's no change proposed from what was already approved. The others are separate ordinances for you to consider.
Okay, thank you. I I was earlier, it was mentioned, are we going to vote for everything that we we've had in our packet? And those were discussed in the packet through the discussion. So I wanted to make sure that those will come out separately and we'll have a chance to voice those. Thank you. Thank you, committee. I appreciate your patience.
Okay, and just in line with the Commissioner Burrows question, I noticed in our package, just for clarity for everyone, because I'm going to end up having a vote on each one. If somebody can from staff could just walk us through quickly, A, B, C, D. I believe we talked about E, which is the budget we've been working on. But what does that entail as far as fees, charges and things those increase, decrease, we keeping it the same? What does that look like? What's that going to look like for our residents?
I, Mayor, I can walk us through if you'd like.
Yep.
So the first item would be a the pilot setting over the pilot transfers and it's actually a reduction in the residential account. So it would be dropped to 9.9 and all the other counts. So commercial and industrial would be 11.9%. And that would be the first one. The second one is the sewer service charges. And those rates are have a 4% increase proposed. And then the next one is the solid waste services. And that and that is raised about, let's see, a dollar and 14 cents. And then the Schmid is remaining, I think they revenue, they're revenue neutral for this year, the Schmid. So it would be approving their budget. And then we get to the city and county and the if the city would be, or excuse me, yes, this the city, the proposal would be for the 1.5 increase would be to set the mill rate at 35.962 mills and improving the capital improvement program. And then the county would be the two mil increase, setting the mill rate at 35.459 mills and improving the five year capital improvement program.
Okay. I think I have a good knowledge. This is a question for me, understanding of the BPU. Appreciate. I had a call to action on that as well, and I just want to thank the commissions again. I know there was some hesitation to separate the pilot to get us to where we're at today, to be able to reduce. to get us to where we're at today, to be able to reduce the residential and make a decision on from residential and commercial. And as a result, we've taken it down from 11.9 to 9.9. If the commission approves that, which is really gonna help our, our working families. It is some level of relief that a lot of our residents have been asking for. That is a, a win for them. The, the biggest one that, that I have, and I'm not really clear on, and I see Mr. Miles there, and maybe this is your camp. If you can answer, the 4% sewer services charge. If you could talk to that, I know there's a lot of consent decrees floating out there. And I know that, uh, what, what does that entail? And then maybe if our, our budget director, that 4%, what does that translate into a dollar amount? And then maybe the CFO can talk about that along the lines of Commissioner Stites' question. What would that increase be for an individual resident? Mr. Miles?
Yeah, absolutely. So the 4% is following the consent decree. We're under, everybody knows we're under a 25-year, $1 billion consent decree. And it has fixed increases, targeted fixed increases, as is explained in previous presentations. That's where it's at this year. That's what we're following. We did reduce some other projects, as you guys are aware, to keep us within that 4% because we could not afford going above that position. So in addition to everything else that's increased within wastewater treatment. So it's still, I think some of you guys sat through the presentations before that I presented, and we're still paying for every one gallon that leaves your home, you're paying about a penny. So that penny is gonna go up 4% per gallon is what it is leaving your home, per household. And that's a 4% for commercial, industrial, and residential as well.
Thank you, Mr. Miles.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez, we can come back to that question. Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, I want to circle back real quick to Iris, if we could. We're paying YDEC, a nonprofit from the city and the county, a total little over 264,000. Cut them loose, say, hey, you're gonna go out as a consultant, put that money towards Iris. There you go. Simple. Just say, sorry, go out as a consultant and, 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 and put that money towards Iris, and then we got enough left over by the soda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stites?
Stites District 7, and I apologize that I don't remember the last meeting, there was some discussion. Mayor, when you brought up the Schmid, there was some conversation that we had about maybe paying twice or double paying, and, and you, you, you directed staff, I believe, to come back with some answers, and I don't, I don't exactly remember, and like I said, I apologize. But maybe somebody in there has, has what, what staff was asked to do regarding the Schmid and, you know, double, double paying into it on the city side and the county side, I believe is, was, was the question.
Thanks, Commissioner. If my memory serves me right, I believe the, uh, the Schmid is, sets its own tax, and I believe the commission approves their recommendation for that business district as an. The question I ask is, and that's one of those things that should have come out in three ons, that was one of those options that was presented, that I was hoping that the commission would have looked into and, and, and seen that as an option for consideration when they had their three ons with staff. Right along the lines of what you're talking about is that there is a, a, not quite $200,000 that I think the, the unified government pays to downtown shareholders. And I believe Commissioner Bynum weighed in that, that we're a member of that district, and since we don't pay property taxes, that was considered a means to support that historically. I came back with the question, well, we don't pay any other NBRs anywhere near that amount. And technically, as a unified government, every mile, an inch of landmass, we cover. So, and we don't pay any payments in lieu of taxes to any other NBRs that, that we're contracted with. So that was just a question that I had as to wanting to know why and the history of that, not that I'm advocating cutting that, it was just a question as to equity. When you talk about if we're gonna fund one, why are we not funding all the NBRs that added expense out of our general fund? If that, if that jogs with Commissioner.
Yeah, and it does, and I appreciate that. Now, here's what I will say, and I know, Mayor, and I'm not speaking for you, that you said that you're not advocating for that. I'm advocating for cutting everything on, in everywhere, so that we can get to a, a budget where we're not raising people's taxes. So the other question that I had was, and I, I've been asked this multiple times, and I'm glad that we're here tonight, and Mr. Miles is there to answer. The people that are being charged the sewer rate, that we talked about the penny a gallon or whatever that amount was, why are the people that are on septic tanks charged that?
He's coming forward, Commissioner.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Miles, Director of Environmental Services. Commissioner Stites, they are not charged a sewer fee if they have septic, and if they are being charged that, they are to call us, and we would make that correction on their BPU bill. We typically yearly find two or three of those per year, and vice versa. We do find two or three that's not paying their sewer bill, so we, we try to analyze that every year.
So anybody that is, if they are being charged that, then they can come forward and, and get that resolved, is that what you're saying? I just, just want to make sure I'm clear on, clear on that, right?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, and I appreciate that. And Mayor, the very last thing that I have for right now is I think the other thing that we were talking about was on the, on the Schmid was about double the donation that we make, we being the unified government, and then the community college, right? So they pay taxes, the community college taxes, and then they, they make a contribution, I think. I don't know that for sure. I think that was one of the questions we were gonna find out. And, and then also, you know, whether, you know, like you said, what other nonprofits or NBRs are, that are we making this amount of contribution to? And that'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't know if anyone, staff can comment on the, I, I know the downtown campus hasn't been completed yet with the Kansas City County Community College. I'm not sure if, if they're paying anything as of yet. I don't know if that property can even be assessed at this point, just because it's still under construction. But then that question, and then the, the, the other question that the Commissioner Stites had about the NBRs, and I know that we pay all the NBRs, and we give all our NBRs a collective, I think, a little over $200,000, I saw. I remember seeing that in the budget. But I believe downtown shareholders is giving monies on top of that. They both have the Schmid money that they get as a taxing entity. I, I think I brought that question up too as why wouldn't we look at as a unified government allowing all the NBRs to become their own taxing entities? Commissioner Bynum spoke to that again. I think you talked about the Business West, and I know Merle Blend, they had worked on that for a while. But to free up any type of unified government, general fund commitments to these non-for-profits that we contract with. So I don't know if, if any research was in on that. I don't know if that's something that could be taken into consideration tonight. Again, that's, those were things that could have been brought out in those three ons that I directed staff to have with this commission to look for savings and, and things, cuts and, and things that they could bring forward before they brought this final budget here tonight. But is there anybody from staff that could answer either one of those questions?
So the question was posed to the community college by me, if they contribute to the Schmid, since they are a tax-exempt entity, and I did not get a response back yet. But we did follow up and ask the question, but they would not pay property taxes. So because they're tax exempt, once they do open, that's not gonna be property taxes. So they wouldn't be paying a property tax as part of the Schmid either, just like the unified government doesn't. But it would be a policy decision whether or not we contribute to the downtown shareholders group or not in lieu of property taxes, since we don't pay property taxes for all of the governmental buildings we have downtown.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Stites? Commissioner Stites?
Yep, I'm here. I was just getting switched over to where I could answer. Yeah, it, it does. Thank you. And so I think on, in our on threes is when we had this discussion. And it, we talked about any and all entities that are not paying property tax. And there's a litany of them. You can go down that list, and we can discuss that later, that we, we maybe start looking at a, um, a usage fee, right? Because none of them are paying into our roads that are being driven on every day, our infrastructure that needs to be paid, or I mean, sorry, needs to be repaired. So I, I would like to further that discussion on, on how we might look at some sort of a usage or impact fee, or I know it was discussed when we talked about like the American Royal and, and these other non, nonprofits that directly have an impact to our infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kane?
If you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to make some motions.
Uh, standby, Commissioner. I'll, I'll get to it. Okay. I think we've got a lot of discussion. I've got a consensus from. I got a consensus on Commissioner Ramirez, Burns, Bynum, Townsend, Davis, Kane, and, and Burrows have indicated that they're prepared to move forward with the vote. Break me apart, my own Commissioner Burrows. Okay, so we have a majority of commissioners that are ready to move forward and start the voting. So the first item is the approval of a resolution setting the BPU percentage of gross revenues over by BPU to the UG for 2026. Counsel, can you briefly restate that again on that motion, which this commission will be taking up for consideration?
Did you need, did you want me to recap of what was in that, or?
No, ju- just what they would be voting on.
I think Commissioner Kane was.
Commissioner Kane, do you have that?
Yes. I move that the resolution saying the percentage of gross operating revenue to be set over by the Board of Public Utilities to unify government for fiscal year 2026 be adopted.
Second.
Okay, good. Can you add the specifics into that, counsel, or?
Yes, and that would, the specifics would be that the residential accounts, the pilot would be set at 9.9% of the gross revenues, and the non-residential accounts would be set at 11.9%.
Okay, Commissioner Kane, does that align with your, with your?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Clerk roll call.
Roll call. Townsend, Burns.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Lopez.
No.
Stites.
No.
Davis.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye, and that is a reduction from 11% to 9.9, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Which is a cost savings.
The vote, the vote is eight to two. The motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to our next item, which is sewer services charger, charges. I'll entertain a motion of a resolution establishing the rate.
Mayor, I have a question. Sorry.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Stites.
Yeah, I was, I was quite aware that that was a savings from 11.9 to 9.9, but I think it was nine, 10.9 to 9.9. But the, my, my, not that I need to justify my vote, but I'm in favor of eliminating the pilot totally. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Again, I'll entertain a motion. This is the next item, which is a sewer service charge, as we heard from our director, Mr. Miles, in regards to the consent decree that, that this commission is obligated to abide by. And that's where this 4% recommendation came from. Before we do that, Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you, Mayor. I know in the discussion in reference to the rates, and there was some grant monies to be, to that department was supposed to seek. Do we know where we are on receiving any grants to help in this process? I know some of the, what do you call them, CPOs or CSOs, I'm sorry, the CSOs have some grant opportunities to them to keep this cost down over the lifetime of the consent decree. Can you tell us where we might be on those grants? Those grants do reduce the overall cost in, in keeping the mill levy down on, and fees down on the stormwater. So I'd like to kind of know where we are.
Completely agree. Commissioner Jeff Miles, Director of Environmental Services. Two that you're aware of, that we aggressively went out this last year, two $20 million grants. If you remember, those two came in front of standing committee. I'll just be honest, sadly, we were one of the latest, last to put in our request, and we were denied that, that money. So we were not awarded that.
Will you be seeking them? Will you be going after the grants again next year?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We'll go over every possible grant that we can chase. And I would say EPA, KDHE, a lot of them actually come to us, knowing that our community is in the condition that it is in our infrastructure, and they actually search us out. I think, you know, one request, and I've spoken to David and Shelley and, and other team members, is the quicker that we could get those on standing committees, and through that process puts us at the front of the line to get those grants. It would be our ask, would help us do that.
Great. I would suggest we do that ASAP to ensure that we don't miss the timeline.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Davis?
I'm Mr. Miles, before you, before you leave. Sorry, just very, very quickly. We also have a, a consent decree that is also kind of a part of this. Can you just kind of briefly speak to that, that there, there's a need here for us to be in line with that?
Angie, can I speak on that?
I, the answer to the commissioner's question is yes, that we are absolutely need to be in line with that, and that does require at minimum these amounts.
That is correct. Yes.
Just wanted to get that on record, that while we don't want to do this, there, there is a need to do this. There's the federal government that is saying we have to do this, and that many of these improvements are, quite frankly, East of 635, which need the investment in infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Miles, Director. Okay. Takes us again to the sewer service charge before you all to establish a resolution for that rate. I believe it's 4%. Is that correct, counsel?
That is correct.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the ordinance relating to sewer service charges approving the regulation establishing the rate effective January 1, 2026, and repealing any previous adopted regulation, establish such rates be adopted.
Second.
Just for clarity, Commissioner Kane, you are making a motion for the rate to be at 4% increase, correct?
Yes, sir. The, the increase is, what, what is? The increase, what is it?
4%.
4%.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second? Oh, there was a second. Who seconded that?
Me, Commissioner Ramirez.
Commissioner Ramirez. A motion second, clerk roll call.
Roll call. Townsend, Burns.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Lopez.
No.
Stites.
No.
Davis.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
No.
The vote is seven to three. The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to the next item before this governing body, which is consideration for raising the solid waste fee for single-family residents and residential units and building not containing more than four dwelling units. It would become effective January 1 of 2026. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the ordinance relating to the monthly fee on residential units in Kansas City, Kansas, to the fund, unified government solid waste services, amending section 3117B of the unified government of Wyandotte County, class Kansas City, Kansas code, and repealing the original section 31-17B be adopted.
And counsel, what would that amount be?
At $20.15.
To adjust to $20.15.
Okay. All right. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion second, clerk roll call, please.
Roll call. Townsend.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Lopez.
No.
Stites.
No.
Davis.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
No.
The vote is seven to three. The motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to item dealing with the self-supported municipal improvement district, which we refer to as the Schmid, the downtown Schmid. I believe that that, according to staff, is a revenue neutral budget. There will be no increase from the previous year going into 2026. I'll entertain a motion for that adoption.
I move the ordinance expressing the property taxation policy of the unified government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, with respect to financing the 2026 annual budget for the self-supported municipal improvement district, and approving and adopting and appropriating the budget of self-supported municipal improvement district and levy a tax for the year beginning January 1, 2026 be adopted.
Counsel, can you, clarity, I'd like to get that amount on record, that's being proposed for motion.
The proposed budget is set at the, let's see, the mill levy, the recommended mill levy was 8.9540. The...
Mayor, with the adjustment of 8.94, 8.954 mills.
And that was, and they had their budget, which you're also approving, is estimated
Say that again, please. $542,800 what?
34.
$542,834, thank you.
Is that the motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Kane. Okay. There's a motion. Is there a sec? I'm sorry, Commissioner Bynum has a question.
My question is, their mill levy from '24 to '25 went from what to what? Their mill levy rate, since they went revenue neutral, I have to assume they're dropping their mill levy rate. Mr. Conway? Okay, property values went down.
I believe they kept their mill rate the same because they did not need to increase it. And they will realize, you know, they'll still have the revenue for the budget that was proposed, because there was a very small reduction in the assessed values.
Okay, assessed value down. I think you told us that last week. So the mill levy rate for the SMID is 8.954. Is that correct?
Thanks. That's recommended, I think it is, the clerk is telling me that it's, what is important is the dollar, the budget that is approved.
There's still levy to mill levy rate. I just was curious.
And just to kind of clarify that, sorry, just to clarify a little bit, when we look at, when a budget is presented to the clerk's office, and they indicate what their mill levy is, that is the amount that we cannot go over. We adjust that mill levy rate based on their budget to match the actual dollars that they have asked for in their budget.
So you, by law, are required to go by the dollar amount of the budget, they tell you, and then you set whatever the correct mill levy rate is for that dollar amount of that budget.
Correct.
Thank you, and I will second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion, and there is a second. Commissioner Burrows, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the question, it comes down to the SMID, there's much discussion as to the additional dollars we give out of the general fund to the SMID. That's one, one source. The other source is the downtown business leaders choose to tax themselves additionally above what they're being taxed now to provide services for the downtown area. I commend them for going revenue neutral. However, I think there's still a question as to how much money that we continue to provide them when they are their own taxing entity. So I know it comes down to fairness question. I just wanted to bring that forward as we move forward on our vote.
And that was a good question. That kind of lines with Commissioner Stikes' question that he had earlier. But again, those were all items that I was hoping that would have been brought out on the three ons before the administrator brought forth his final recommendation tonight. But there will be another budget next year, and so hopefully this question will be brought back, and the new mayor and the governing body can make a decision at that point. So there is a motion, it's a second that I've accepted. Clerk roll call.
Roll call. Townsend.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Lopez.
No.
Stites.
No.
Davis.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
The vote is eight to two. The motion carries.
Okay. That takes us to the adoption of the 2025 amended and the 2026 budget for the city of Kansas City, Kansas, including all capital improvement projects. This also includes any amendments that may have been added, that were attached, that staff has provided to you. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move that the ordinance approving and adopting and appropriating the operator capital improvement project budgets of the unified government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, of the city of Kansas City, Kansas, for fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025, and the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2026, saying the mill levy rate at 35.962 mills, and approving the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2025 through 2029 be adopted.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, clerk roll call.
Roll call. Townsend.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Lopez.
No.
Stites.
No.
Davis.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
No.
The vote is seven to three. The motion carries.
Okay. Now, we're going to take a short recess now. Five minutes, come back.
There's been a request from Commissioner Kane in Bynum, and so we're gonna, we're gonna backtrack to the self-supported municipal improvement district, Schmidt, and I believe Commissioner Kane has a motion.
I'd like to rescind my motion on the Schmidt.
Is there a second?
Who was that? Did I second it?
Yeah.
Bynum second.
Okay, is there a reason why Commissioner Kane, just for clarity?
Well, for more clarification.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second to rescind the original vote that was given on the self-supported municipal improvement district. Okay, clerk roll call. I'm sorry, Commissioner Townsend.
Mayor, can we have some more information about where this is going?
Commissioner Bynum, you want to weigh in?
Thank you. So I, I keep questioning the math and, you know, we looked at this a week ago with this voluntary contribution that the UG and other entities downtown make to the Schmidt.
Okay.
And we've been through years in the past when we opted to not make that voluntary contribution. Other years like oh eight, oh nine, when the market crash happened and the unified government withdrew its voluntary contribution into the Schmidt. And there are other taxing, or not necessarily taxing entities, but government entities downtown that also can and sometimes do make a voluntary contribution to the Schmidt like the Board of Public Utilities, the EPA back when that building was on Fifth Street. You know, possibly University of Kansas Health System. So there are other nonprofits and government entities that, that could and possibly will make a voluntary contribution. But what I was wondering was, the number that I thought we were seeing a week ago was one hundred and sixty thousand of our UG voluntary contribution. And Commissioner Burrows asked about it again tonight. And I was just wondering, we could withdraw that voluntary contribution and possibly help Iris have a little bit further sustainability other than when it runs out in February, or whatever we think we should do with that funding. But then the discussion became whether, whether their budget that they've provided to the clerk is including that hundred and sixty thousand, which actually the budget document that Clerk Monica showed us is one hundred and twelve thousand. So we just need to understand more. My opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and then I guess do we have like a target when this would be taken back up so we can set a deadline?
Yes, we were saying we, on the twenty fifth of September, we can have resolution and take a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Motion to reconsider on September twenty fifth.
Bynum second.
The motion. Thank you, Commissioners. There's a motion to reconsider. Thank you, Commissioner Townsend. Question, Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, there was a motion to rescind or withdraw. So are we doing two motions?
We, we've got to do two, but the first one is to reconsider.
Okay, so we're considering it on the twenty fifth. So we've decided it'll be one motion reconsider on the twenty fifth.
Okay, okay. So Council's saying we only need one motion to reconsider.
He'll rescind and then reconsider on the twenty fifth. Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Steig, just for clarity, you want to walk us through your motion again?
Uh-oh.
I'm sorry.
Uh-oh.
No, I would, I would not.
Uh-oh.
But I, but I do have a question. My hands raised.
All right. I, I apologize, Commissioner Kane. It's, uh, it's been a long day for me. Commissioner Steig says a question.
So since this has budgetary implications, do we need to rescind the budget vote also?
No.
I, I, all I can hear is some mumbling. Nobody spoke up to the mic.
No, 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 no. That, that hasn't been approved yet.
What hasn't been approved?
The budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Commissioner Kane, can you walk us through?
We just did, we did the city.
We did the city side. The, the city budget was approved.
Okay, maybe I'm confused. Commissioner Steig, what, just for clarity, what, what were you talking about exactly? Because we were discussing the Schmidt.
Yep. Since the Schmidt has budgetary implications on the city side, do we not need to look at the city side budget that got approved?
I'll, I'll let our, I'll let our CFO talk to that.
Kelly can even CFO. So should, should the commission decide not to fund the Schmidt this next year? That could be reallocated to something different at later time. You don't need to change the vote on the city budget because you've directed us to find an offsetting amount, in particular on the city side for Iris. So, and that's two hundred and seven. The confusion that we have on the Schmidt is that on their list of budget, they do show our contribution at one twenty seven. And we're unclear how that calculates into the mill rate levy because the state forms get very confusing. So we just want to double check that should that amount come out, then what does that do to the mill rate, if anything, so that you all have an informed decision. But you would have an opportunity to consider that policy decision on the twenty fifth, basically.
Okay, I guess we took five minutes and we're possibly going to save one hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. I was just wondering if we took any more time, how much more we can save. All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Kane, you want to restate your motion again for clarity? Council, can you help?
The proposed motion would be that this item be reconsidered on September twenty fifth at the regular meeting.
Do you reconsider on September twenty fifth?
David's second.
Bynum has to. I, I have to second it. Okay, I'll second it. Do you want to state it, Monica?
Let, let me restate this to make sure we're all on the same page. We have a motion to reconsider the previous approval of the Schmidt for further clarification, which we will schedule for hearing on September twenty fifth. Correct.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Okay, clerk roll call.
Roll call. Townsend?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Ramirez?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Lopez?
Aye.
Steig?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows? The vote is ten to zero. The motion carries.
Okay, before I proceed to the, to the, the next, the last item, I'd just like to say that I made a commitment when I ran that, that I would do everything I could to make sure that, to try and hold the line on any property tax increase. Since I've been mayor, I've asked for audits, particularly a performance and a audits, forensic audit as well of the unified government to find cost savings. I know that that has not occurred in a comprehensive way. The appraised assessed values went up three point five mils, and I believe I, I heard our CFO said that about an average of seven percent. What I don't understand, and I've never been able to get handle on, is the unified government never seems to have enough money every year. The practice has been to continue to tax, spend, borrow, deplete the reserve funds and balloon our budgets every single year on the backs of taxpayers that have filled this room and have asked for property tax relief. And we're not even talking about the fee increases. We have several revenue streams, more than most cities, anywhere you'd find in the great state of Kansas. We even own a utility that has a pilot that we attach other fees to that as well. We raise fees every year. The compounding fees, the compounding property tax increases, it is really becoming beyond burdensome from our hardworking residents, our seniors on fixed income, our young people looking for affordable housing and a place to stay. Businesses that have come before this body that have noted that it is a struggle and then new businesses that look at this community to want to expand or grow. They're challenged to invest in our community unless we give huge incentives, basically give the farm away because of our practices. And then you, you add on top of the three point five mil increase, seven percent average just from appraised values, another four point six mil increase, two point three on the city, two point three on the county, on top of what our residents are going to experience. And I noted in one meeting before that my preference was not to go above the appraised assessed value, which this body has no control over. That's the, the appraised values coming from our appraiser. But what we do have control over is increasing our mail levy over that rate. I would have liked to seen a little more effort put into looking at our revenue streams, looking at what a forensic kind of performance audit could do to, to find cost savings, looking at any duplication of services and consolidate some of our departments, looking for innovations and efficiencies and, and best practices that I've, I've seen other cities that are successful implement as well as you couple that with sales tax increases that have outpaced property tax. And we still don't have enough money. And people tell me all the time, or they ask me, Mayor, where is all the money going? Because we just don't see it. And, and I, I don't, I reject any notion that this revenue neutral plays a lot into it because I can tell you when I became mayor, before I became mayor, that a lot of the issues prior to revenue neutral were there, like customer service shortfalls, not enough money. At least that's what we're being told. One of the things that I would have liked to have also seen occur, well, staff worked really hard to give you all options. And, and, and at my request, the administrator and staff had three ons. I believe more time could have been taken on those three ons to really take a hard look at some of those options for cost savings that were given that this, that some of our commissioners just didn't act upon. That could have been. And I think some of those, one or two were brought out tonight that could have been acted on. I cannot good, in good conscience, after four budget processes at May, as mayor, and seeing this body packed out with residents saying that they cannot continue to support any notion of year after year compounding property tax and fee increases, especially it bothers me when I see it's on the back of our seniors on fixed incomes and our working residents, especially our working poor. They don't expect government or this government to solve all their problems. They know that there's a certain level of taxes that have to be paid. But I join them and I stand with a lot of our residents that have packed this room out saying that they know and they believe that we can do better. I've always said it, that the government should never be unified within itself. I don't like the term unified government. I think it sends a bad message to our residents because I always say that we should put the needs in the requests and, and better yet, the demands that have come before this body of our residents before anything else. The government should not be here to support its needs and its wants and desires. We've got to do a better job of streamlining, finding efficiencies, operate more innovative and letting our residents actually see where their tax dollars are going and marketing that. So not only we, we tell them, but they can see it, they can feel it, and they know that their tax dollars are being used in the way that they're supposed to. I've gotten a lot of calls, a lot of emails over the years. I go out in the community. Anybody that follows me know I'm out almost every day talking to someone, somewhere throughout Windite County, and the message has not changed. Mayor, do something about our taxes. Do something about those fees and do something about BPU pilot. I believe tonight, the commission took a good first step on reducing the overall pilot from eleven point nine, ten point now, now down to nine point nine. I personally believe that we should spend a little more time to see how much more cost savings direction that we can give to our, our staff. They've done their part. And, and so this isn't any indictment on our staff. They've done everything we've asked them to do, including here we are at the eleventh hour, give us all the information that we've asked them to give us. I've asked and I've challenged this commission to make hard decisions because our residents have asked us to make hard decisions and better defining what's essential services and what's not. And all of us have an obligation to meet with our residents and find out what they can, they can and can't live without. I know what they've told me they can and can't live without. I would have liked to have seen something come forward with something that really embodied that. Again, this is the commission's budget as given from a recommendation from our administrator. But under what little authority I have left as mayor, I cannot, in good conscience, support this budget at this time based on what based on what I feel we could do to find more cost savings and then also based on the requests from constituents and the people of this community that I've made a commitment to, to try and hold the line on property tax and fee increases. So with that, I'm going to veto this budget.
Kane, motion to override the veto?
Ramirez, second.
There's a motion and there's a second? Clerk, roll call.
Roll call. Townsend?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Ramirez?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Lopez?
No.
Stites?
No.
Davis?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
No.
The vote is seven to three. The motion to override carries.
All right, thank you. That takes us to the last item. To adopt the Windite County twenty twi, twenty twenty five, I'm sorry, amended in the twenty twenty six budget for the county of Windite in Kansas, including capital improvements as well as any amendments and attachments as amended. Is there a motion?
I move that the resolution approving the adopting, the appropriation and the operating and capital improvement project budgets of the Unified Government of Windout County, Kansas City, Kansas, for Windout County, Kansas City, Kansas for the fiscal year beginning January one twenty twenty five and the fiscal year January one twenty twenty six, setting the mill levy rate at thirty five point four five nine mils and approving a five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years twenty twenty five through twenty twenty nine be adopted.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second. Clerk, roll call.
Roll call. Townsend?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Ramirez?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Lopez?
No.
Stites?
No.
Davis?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
No.
The vote is seven to three. The motion carries.
Okay, for the same reasons stated above, from my previous comment here before this vote, again, just from the commitment I have to the residents that that I've spoken to again, that wanted us to hold the line on property tax and fee increases, keeping that with commitment from the great folks in Windite County, I'm going to veto that, that item.
Kane, motion to override the veto?
Ramirez, second.
Okay, there's a motion second. Clerk, roll call.
Roll call. Townsend?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Ramirez?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Lopez?
No.
Stites?
No.
Davis?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
No.
The vote is seven to three. The motion carries.
All right, thank you all. There is no further business for us tonight. I just want to thank staff again for your hard work. It is appreciated and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
David's second. There's a motion second. Clerk, roll call.
Roll call. Townsend?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Ramirez?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Lopez?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
Aye.
The vote is ten to zero. The motion carries.
All right, thank you all for your time and have a great evening.